Good evening. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem, and I'm happy to call to order this May 2nd meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. And would ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our Sergeant at Arms tonight is Lieutenant Burns. Thank you for being with us, Lieutenant. We have our first honoreum, please. Item H1.
Item H1, proclamation declaring May 2nd, 2022 as Alfred Adams' Day. Whereas Alfred Adams is a lifelong resident of Winston-Salem and has dedicated much of his free time as a volunteer to many significant community organizations and causes which have had a tremendous positive impact on Winston-Salem. And whereas he was an initial task force member in the 2001 merger, which created the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership. And whereas Alfred Adams chaired the Downtown Winston-Salem Foundation for much of the last 20 years and has overseen over 30 small business loans to downtown businesses, which has been a major part of the revitalization of downtown. And whereas he worked directly with past councilmember Wanda Marshall to set up the conservation easement to preserve city on land for a park, now the site of Marshall Park, and was an instrumental in administering private grant funding of $500,000, which allowed for enhancements in Marshall Park, such as the featured public art component. And whereas Alfred Adams has served on the advisory board of the Wake Forest Innovation Quarter and is currently a Commissioner of the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem Board of Directors. And whereas Alfred Adams' steadfast service and unwavering commitment throughout the years has made a lasting impact on our community and the many lives he touched along the way. Now, therefore, I, J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2022 as Alfred Adams' Day, given under my hand and seal the second day of May, 2022.
Thank you. Alfred, would you join me at the podium, please?
Alfred, I now speak on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Winston-Salem. We say thank you for the many hours and days you spent. We're making our downtown a special place, and you continue to serve our city on the Housing Authority and other places. So, thank you very much. It's your day today.
Thank you.
If you'd like to leave.
Well, this does catch me by surprise when I was asked if I would come before this August group and be recognized. And I really do appreciate that. I will very quickly say, I do go back, and Allen will remember, in about 1995, '96, when Allen was an Assistant City Manager and with Jack Stillman. And we went to Asheville, North Carolina, to just sort of talk about what it may be like to get energy into a downtown. And we had a great lunch with John Cram. And John Cram said, we said, "So, tell us, what's the secret sauce?" And John Cram said, "People. People love to look at other people." So, we need to do something and anything that we do to bring people to the downtown, because others will follow them. And he really set out for us a course that has been, I think we've pursued it. There's been some halting steps, but we have. And we go back, and now Allen is our mayor and our leader, and we've just taken what we heard in 1996. And I have so many people coming from out of town. I have fellow graduates from Wake Forest, and they say, "When we were here, you didn't, we didn't even think about going downtown." And now there's shuttle buses and others that are coming here. So, there's so many people that are proud of what you, as our city council, has put your stamp of approval as we move ahead. And I just hope that we can continue the momentum we have. Thank you. I'm honored beyond what I deserve.
Thank you, Alfred. Item H2, please.
Item H2, resolution declaring Historic Preservation Month in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, May 2022. Whereas the City of Winston-Salem joins city and counties across the United States in a nationwide celebration of Historic Preservation Month. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism promotion, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for all communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for all neighborhoods and citizens all over the City of Winston-Salem. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that have shaped us as people. And whereas Historic Preservation Month is cosponsored by Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission, Preservation Forsyth, and other local preservation and neighborhood organizations throughout Forsyth County. And whereas these organizations encourage members of the community to participate in creative and fun events related to historic preservation as a way to celebrate Preservation Month 2022. And whereas there are over 20 events scheduled in Forsyth County for citizens to attend. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby declare the month of May 2022 a Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the people of the Winston-Salem to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in the special observance. Be it further resolved that the resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city council, and that a copy be furnished to the Forsyth County Historic Resource Commission, adopted this second day, May 2022.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. We have to present this, Councilmember Jeff McIntosh, and Alina Metzer Holderfield is going to accept the resolution on behalf of the commission.
Councilmember Larson, do you want to...
I want to express my appreciation for what your organization does and how much the city really relies on our heritage, our built heritage, and our landscape heritage to really be that thing that makes us special that other communities can't, just can't duplicate. We've got it. We don't want to lose it. And I really appreciate all the effort that goes into maintaining that.
Thank you so much. My name's Alana Metzer Holderfield. I'm with Muse Winston-Salem and the Forsyth County Preservation Month Committee. I just want to thank you all for your ongoing support of preservation. And if anyone's interested in the events planned throughout the month, you can visit preservationmonth.org to get all the details. Thank you again.
Thank you. We have item H3.
Item H3, resolution recognizing City Clerk's Week, May 2nd through the 8th, 2022.
Councilmembers, I felt like that. We shouldn't ask Sandy to read her resolution. With your permission, I'm going to read the resolution.
Good call.
Whereas city clerks are a vital part of local government throughout the world. And whereas the city clerk is the oldest office among public servants. And whereas the city clerk's office provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing body, and agencies of other governmental levels. And whereas the city clerk's office pledges to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the city clerk's office serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas the city clerk's office continually serves to improve the administration of the affairs of the city clerk's office through participating in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings for their state, county, and professional organizations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2022, as City Clerk's Week, and extend the appreciation to the city clerk's office for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the mayor and city council and the citizens of Winston-Salem. This is the second day of May 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. I know there's nobody opposed. So, I've got the beautiful resolution. Mayor Protem, would you like to present this, behalf of the city council?
Is it because you just don't want to get up? Congratulations. On behalf of the city council and the mayor and all the employees of the city, we appreciate you so. You guys know how much I love you. I stop in every moment and just holler, "I love you. Thank you." So, just, Ms. Sandy Keen, you guys. You do so much that people have no idea what you all do for the city of Winston-Salem.
I'd just like to take a moment to introduce my staff. Everybody, of course, knows Mary Beth. She's the deputy, and she's my right-hand person, and our IT person, and everything in between. And Ms. Tanya McFatter, she's the real queen of the clerk's office. She keeps us all in line. And of course, Ms. Jackie Clayton, that makes all of this happen for every one of you guys. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, and these girls, they just do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Again, I know I speak for all the council. Say how much we appreciate the great work you all do for all of us. You make us look good.
Definitely.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of the following items. There are eight zoning petitions. There are five items related to boards and commissions. The zoning petitions are listed as public hearings, and when these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will get an opportunity to speak. If there's opposition to the zoning petitions, the opponents and the opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and then three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, a closed public hearing and the city council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow, Tuesday, at 9:00 a.m., and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies off our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. We do have items Z1 and Z2. I believe we're probably going to want to continue those. I'll recognize Councilmember Clark first for item Z1.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I was originally scheduled to be out of town this week, and we informed the folks not to be here tonight, and so I'm going to continue it anyway, since they're not here. I move to continue Z1 until June 6, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Motion second. Any discussion? Now, please vote for this item when it comes up. Yes will be to continue the item, and that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. And then recognize Councilmember Taylor. I believe you have a similar continuation.
Oh, John. John's going to do this one. I'm sorry.
Z2. Z2 is mine. At the request of the petitioner, I move to continue Z2 until June 6, 2022.
Second. Motion second to continue this as well. Any discussion? If you would, please vote for this one as it comes up. Thank you. That's unanimous. Excuse me, Councilmember Taylor, for giving you a heart attack there.
No worries.
Item Z3.
Item Z3, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition of James Estate A&amp;W LLC from MH and RS 20 to MH-S. Property is located on the north side of High Point Road, east of Glen High Road, located in the southeast ward. The planning board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the August 2nd, September 7th, and November 1st, 2021 city council meeting, and April 4th, 2022 city council meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, I understand there have been some additional conditions. Would you like Mr. Murphy to run through those?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. Yes, over the last several weeks, the petitioner, I believe, has worked with the surrounding property owners, and they have made the following changes and concessions, shown on the site plan in front of you. They agreed to a 50% increase in the planting rate in the new buffer yard along the west, south, and east property lines that are highlighted in the yellow highlighter. They also agreed to 15 supplemental evergreen plantings proposed to supplement the existing vegetation along the northern and western property lines, 15 along each line. And that's in the vicinity of where the existing manufactured home park is and where they cannot put in a buffer yard, and there is no buffer yard required. They worked with the property owners on that. And that would be along the Alred and Most Stella property line adjacent to the existing manufactured home park. And that's what the orange highlighted areas along the western and northern property line are. If you can follow my cursor, if I can get it to show up, that is in this area and this area. And also along that, this property line here, along the Most Stella property line, is a six-foot-tall chain-link fence along that property line. And with those concessions, it's my understanding that the surrounding property owners are okay. And I believe, and I'll look to the city attorney, I believe that if the council would like those, would like those site plan changes that are above and beyond the UDO requirements, that they, the petitioner would have to agree to that verbally in front of council.
We need the petitioner, if you would, come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and just indicate affirmatively that you accept these conditions.
Robert Shunk, 2310 South Mine Boulevard, Suite 238 in Durham, North Carolina, 27703. Yes, as the petitioner, we agree to these additional proffers.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions to Mr. Murphy, by the way? All right. Seeing that, I'll recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council. As you're aware, this case has come before us at least three additional, or three times in the past. As you know, it's my motto, to measure several times and cut once. And I think the developer has done a great job of working with the property owners in the area to come up with an amicable solution. But with that being said, I move for, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3482.
Second. Motion and second. Before we go to any discussion, I will close the public hearing that we did continue from the last time and several times there. So, we do have a motion and a second in discussion of this item. Councilmember Larson.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I'd like to applaud the effort by Councilmember Taylor and the developers. You remember, I had concerns over the buffer areas, and they seem to have addressed those very admirably, and I appreciate that cooperation.
Good. Thank you. All right, then, all those in favor, please vote for this item when it comes before you. A yes vote would be to approve the zoning. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you.
Item Z4.
Item Z4, public hearing on zoning petition of City of Winston-Salem from Forsyth County RS 9 to Winston-Salem RS 9. Property is located on the west side of Old Ballooz Creek Road, north of Pervard Street, located in the northeast ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. This is just changing from county to city zoning. I'd recognize Councilmember Burke. If she's ready.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, two, W-3518.
Second. Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone, council chairman, who'd like to be heard on this item?
Yes.
Would you please come to the podium, please, ma'am? If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Meredith Resensky. My home is 5030 Largo Drive, which is directly behind the 33 acres that is being discussed. So, we currently have, my home has county zoning, even though we have a Winston-Salem address, but we have services through Walkertown. It gets a little complicated. But my concern is if this development that is being talked about going behind, directly behind my home, turns into city. We've already had issues with water runoff, and a couple of years ago, our basement flooded, and we're just now getting, it was a finished basement. We're just now getting to it being complete again. We've had, had a super hard time finding contractors, so we ended up doing it ourselves, fixing everything and all that. So, my concern is water. Also, this past week, we've been attacked. My chickens have been attacked twice by coyotes that I feel have been flushed from that property. Previously, I've heard them, like, off in the distance. I have never seen them before. There's been activity going on back there now, and I've, three of my chickens are gone, and three others, the other three, are injured, and I'm currently nursing them back to health. I guess I should have taken pictures. But I have never seen the coyotes until this past week, and they're in our yard, they're in our neighborhood, they're running up and down our street. And I've got three small children, just turned one, a three-year-old, and a just-turned-five-year-old, and I now don't want them to play outside. And we've got 3.11 acres. Our lot is the biggest lot at the end of the cul-de-sac. We have pretty much only one neighbor. Further up is the rest of the neighborhood. There's also talk about a road going in to connect our neighborhood to that neighborhood, directly beside my direct neighbor. And I'm concerned about how that will affect through traffic, because we already get a lot of turnaround traffic in our cul-de-sac. It's not a full cul-de-sac. It's kind of skimpy one. So, a lot of people use our driveway to turn around. So, there's been some deterioration at the end of our driveway from years and years of use, and also, small children. Lots of vehicles with trailers turn around down there, you know, like yard maintenance trailers and that sort of stuff. And I guess those are, that's mostly my concerns. And also, it was talking about, it was high density. So, I was wondering, what are the property, what are the proposed values of the homes going to be and how they might affect our property values?
Thank you. Let me just explain a little bit that this item tonight that the city council was considering does not change the zoning that was already there, that was approved by the Forsyth County government several years ago. This piece of property was voluntarily annexed into the city, so the city has to change the county zoning to the city zoning, but it really doesn't change any of the uses that are already allowed there.
If it does change from county to city, I've been in talks with Wildlife and Animal Control about the coyotes just a couple of days ago. And if it changes to city, we might not have the same ability to try to handle the coyotes.
Yeah. It's already in the city. It was annexed into the city, so this zoning doesn't affect that at all. It's already in the city limits, so to speak.
Okay.
But we can certainly have, our staff would be happy to chat with you about the density requirements and any of the design elements that you might be interested in. I'm not sure if we know the value of the homes at this time, Chris, but...
And I'll defer to the attorney, but that's not, I mean, at this point, there hasn't even been a development, a new development proposed or approved. There was an old subdivision that was approved on this property years ago, but they would have to go through the process to bring it up to today's standard, but it would be done under existing RS 9 zoning. But as far as home values, that's not something that is subject to zoning discussion.
And RS 9 means what?
It's a 9,000-square-foot minimum lot size, so you're looking at about four and a half units per acre.
Four and a half units per acre. We'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might come up. Let's go on.
Okay.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Just, is anyone else that'd like to be heard on this? I got a little bit ahead of myself. Seeing no one, I'll now close the public hearing. We do have a motion on the floor as well. And Councilmember Clark?
I was just going to come in. We have had a cavity problem in the Buna Vista area in my ward. I would suggest you talk with Animal Control, and I believe they come under the auspices of the Sheriff's Department now. We did not have much luck with them, but the Animal Control is a county-wide responsibility, so it handles both city property and corners will win everybody else. So, I would suggest you check with them, see if they can help
Excuse me, ma'am. We're not having a back-and-forth here. We'll do this offline, if you don't mind.
Sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. This just basically keeps in place a zoning that's already in place, so there's no change. What you're talking about is really the site plan that will have to be developed for the site to be used. And that's something you need to monitor as that goes along, and I'm sure you can be in contact with the planning staff and help you understand what the buildings are going to look like and potentially what the potential impact might be to your house based on that.
Thank you. If we make sure we can get your address, Mr. King would mind getting that, so we can make sure we can follow up with you. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion, councilmembers? All right. We do have a motion and a second to approve this change of zoning from county to city, and would you please vote? That's unanimous, coming up. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item Z5.
Item Z5, public hearing on zoning petition of Calco Incorporated from HB-S to GB-S. Property is located on northeast corner of Peters Creek Parkway and South Park Boulevard, located in the south ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chairman who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I recognize Councilmember Larson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem, I move approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, of W-3519.
Second. Motion second. Is there any further discussion or questions on this item? If not, please vote on this item when it comes up. A yes vote approves the zoning. Thank you. That is unanimous. All right. Item Z6.
Item Z6, public hearing and consideration of final development plan of Brookstown Development Partners LLC. Property is located at the southwest corner of West 2nd Street and Brookstown Avenue, located in the northwest ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chairman who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember McIntosh.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-2936.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? If not, please vote when this item comes up before you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh. Excuse me. Item Z7.
Item Z7, public hearing on zoning petition of Brenda K. Aiken from RS 9 to LB-L. Property is located on the northeast corner of University Parkway and Coral Drive, located in the northeast ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in the council chairman who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3522.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote when this item comes before you. A yes vote is approving the zoning, and that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item Z8.
Item Z8, public hearing on zoning petition of Site Plan Amendment of Coveting Ring Incorporated. Property is located on the west side of Maury Road, across from Beck's Church Road, located in the north ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chairman who is opposed to this rezoning? Yes, ma'am. We'll hold a public hearing. Is the petitioner here? Yes, sir. Would you like to make comments first? We'll give you 15 minutes, and then we can give the opponents If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Robert Whitehead, and I live on 2540 Spice Wood Drive. And I'm the developer to the property. And we originally had townhomes designed, but we had decided to switch to single-family because we think it'd be better for the community, just better recreation and just, it's just easier to build a product with homes and have yards and stuff like that and less HOA issues and things. So we switched, so we brought the project back through here for rezoning, which we're asking for the same zoning. I know there's some congestion and stuff on Beck's Church Road and Murray Road, but hopefully the city and DOT will do their things to help with that traffic light. I know that I'm putting the turn lane in to help with the traffic on my end, but that's, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, we went through all this the first time when we did the townhome, so it's all the same information. We just, you know, want to do homes now instead for, you know, entry-level, entry-level homes. But that's it.
Right. Thank you very much. Anyone else for the proponents? All right, thank you for the opposition. Yes, ma'am, if you would, please. Have your name and address for the record as well.
Rebecca Silverman, 5315 Chatelon Drive. Yeah, thanks for having me. I only have a couple of things to say, and I'm just reiterating some things I said at the planning board that are also on the public record. And generally, I agree with the redevelopment of, instead of townhomes going into single-family. And I just wanted to kind of have the moment to connect with the developer and also advocate for the stormwater management study, which I believe is required before they can continue on with, with getting permits. And I guess I wanted to ask if that study would be available to the public. My property is downhill from the area, so, and the stormwater detention pond is cutting into some of the woods that are directly north of my property. So I'm just wanting to do my due diligence, make sure we don't have stormwater runoff issues in the future. You know, there's, there's a stream further west that I also want to, I know there's quite a bit of tree save between the development and the stream, but I want to make sure that no sort of construction debris goes towards that stream and, and also kind of continue protecting it as the development is, is complete and residents are living there. Obviously, that's a stream that, you know, fuels all the rest and goes into the Yadkin. And, yeah, so I guess I'm wondering from the council, is it ever standard for a developer to submit a kind of construction pollution mitigation plan to go through with a development?
Mr. Murphy, can you comment? There is erosion control permit.
There is an erosion control, but not, not basically doing an environmental assessment or anything such as that.
But there would be measures to protect that stream.
Correct.
Can you comment if the, if any of the reports would be available to the public?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once submitted, basically, anything that comes into our office is considered a public record unless it is dealing with an investigation or something along those lines. And then, as long as it's not criminal, like for our zoning investigations, any, any record becomes a public record following the closing of the investigation, so yes.
Okay, thank you. And I guess to that, one more point is, during construction, is there ever a plan to, I don't know, based on the construction and potential pollution during the construction? Or is there ever any kind of plan to say how that will be dealt with?
Mr. Murphy?
I mean, again, during the approval process for the grading and erosion control, all of that is reviewed, and then the erosion control inspectors and stormwater inspectors that are part of that department and division do periodically inspect the site. But if you yourself see sediment leaving the site, or if you see things that you think are going to cause failure to the system, you can always call erosion control and say, hey, I have concern, and that will prompt them to come out. And then if there are issues, they'll take corrective measures with the developer to ensure that the systems and things that are in place to protect the environment are shored up.
Great, thank you very much. Just checking my notes to see if there's anything else. As the developer was saying, we've, it's already been brought up to DOT that we want to, you know, make sure the infrastructure is developing at the rate of housing increase, so just here to high-five that idea. And, duh, 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 just, there's a lot. I think to the point of the woman who spoke, spoke before me, it's 20 acres, and there's, I'm lucky enough to live on quite a few acres adjacent to it. And I am kind of curious to see what's going to happen with the wildlife, you know, once all those trees are taken down. Hopefully, not too many coyotes. But yeah, there's, you know, a lot of old-growth trees which are doing a great job absorbing water, and I would just kind of encourage to the developer that if there's any way to save any of those larger old-growth trees to, it would be a benefit to the new residents and to the landscape. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good points. To the proponent, if you had anything you'd like to add on rebuttal, sir? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Well, in that case, I will close the public hearing and ask Mr. Murphy to give the report to the planning board, please.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. This is a request of Coventing Ring Incorporated. The site is approximately 21 acres, located on the west side of Murray Road, across from Beck's Church Road, and it's located in the north ward. This is a site, site plan amendment request for properties on RM8S. It's to change from the 107-lot townhome development that was approved back in the fall to an 83-lot, single-family residential subdivision under the existing zoning category of RM8S. Here is the subject property highlighted on the legacy growth management area plan. This is located in the Legacy Growth Management Area 3 Suburban Neighborhoods Growth Management Area. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow. Again, you'll see the RM8S zoning, which is reflective of the rezoning action that council took back this past fall. And just to draw your attention, Ms., if I can get my mouse to show up perhaps. Ms. Silverman lives on that large piece of property just south of the 732. If you see the 732 on, on the RM8 subject property, her house is just south of that 732-foot measurement that's on there. That's her property, and it's, it's that rather large tract. Just trying to let you know kind of where Ms. Silverman lives in relation to the project. This is the subject property, again, shown on the countywide aerial photo. It's predominantly wooded currently. This is a subject property looking from Beck's Church Road. This is a subject property looking north on Murray Road. This is looking south on Murray Road. The subject property would be to the right here. And that bus is approximately at the location of the Beck's Church Road intersection, getting ready to take a left onto Beck's Church Road. This is the subject property shown on the North Suburban Area Plan Update, which council approved back in 2014. It recommends the property be intermediate-density residential, 8.1 to 18 units per acre. And again, they are maintaining the RM8 zoning, but they are going from the 107 single-family, excuse me, townhomes to 83 single families, so a reduction of about 26 units, if my math is correct. This was the site plan that was approved back in November, with the townhomes shown. And this is the proposed site plan that's before you today, changing to single-family home with basically the same road layout and configuration. The request does not change the approved uses. The request is consistent with, consistent with the legacy recommendations for encouraging residential infill development. The request would increase traffic by 173 trips, and that's based on, even though it's less units, there's a presumed higher trip rate with single-family versus townhomes. So that is reflected in this, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring this back to council, so that you could consider the facts, especially since traffic was an important and key issue the first time around. This slot, I'm actually going to breeze through because it's actually already incorporated into the agreed-upon conditions of approval. That was something that we added at the planning board, but I neglected to remove for this hearing. The recommendation, this was heard by the planning board at their April 14, 2022 public hearing. There was one speaker in opposition, and you've heard from her tonight, Ms. Silverman, and her opposition was primarily centered on a request to ensure that infrastructure is keeping up with new development, and some of the same questions that were asked related to environmental concerns. After hearing that, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this request to council. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. The site plan does meet UDOT requirements, I'm sorry.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy? Councilwoman Monday?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question to clarify on the 173 trips. That's in, that is, those are additional trips. What's the base, so that we can kind of calculate if that's a 5% or a 20% increase? Because that number in a vacuum doesn't quite tell me what I need to know.
Yes, if you'll bear with me, I will pull that up real quickly. The, if you look on, and I'm not sure what the attachment is in your packet, if you look on, on page three of the staff report, the number of townhomes generated approximately 622 trips. The 83 single-family homes would generate about 794 trips. So it's probably an increase of about 20% would be my guess, roughly.
That's vis a vis the multifamily home plan? Is that...
Correct.
So what, my question is, vis a vis the current traffic rate?
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, basically, 620, are you asking what the number of trips on the road?
Currently, yes.
Oh. The current average daily trip count on Murray Road is 9,300. So the 170-odd trips is 7% probably?
Very small percent, okay. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Sorry, that, sorry, I misunderstood the question.
No problem.
Councilwoman Sophia?
Yes, I am concerned about the traffic. I used to live off of Murray Road in 2007, and the traffic was bad then, before they had even developed some of the homes that are out there now. And I wondered what the DOT plan is for Murray Road, because that, for this development is, it's very close to Chatelon. And in the mornings, Chatelon gets very congested because of Forsyth Academy, and Murray Road gets very backed up. And so I, even though it says it's minimal impact, it's minimal on a lot that's going on right now. So I would hope we can get an understanding of what DOT is planning to do to help with the traffic out there, either more traffic lights or some kind of way, because it's not very good even now without the development. So I would just like to know what their plans are.
Right, and I may have to defer part of this to Assistant City Manager King. I do know that as part of the discussion of the case back in November, there are several items that are continued listed, continued to be listed as conditions of approval dealing with the driveway permit, and there are a couple of turn lanes. And the condition that was added to address the concerns of the neighbors and the folks that came out to the first hearing is, basically, the developer's going to pay a fee in lieu of actually doing the signal design at the intersection of Murray Road and Beck's Church Road, because I believe that may tie into some other projects that DOT would be contemplating in the area. So instead of having the developer design that signal in a vacuum, the developer would pay money to the city, and that would go into the overall traffic mitigation actions in the area. And I don't know whether Mr. King has anything to add, or whether that adequately addressed it.
You covered it well.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Larson, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sort of following up on some of the environmental concerns that we heard tonight, this is more of a question maybe to staff, that is, if, if a resident or somebody should witness what appears to be a contaminant being dumped on the property or inadvertently spilled on the property that might contaminate and near my water features, where do they report that within the city's system?
Probably their best course of action would be to, I mean, if, when in doubt, I would say, reach out to the planning department, and we'll try to get it to where it needs to go. I'm not sure if that would be, you know, Keith Huff's department in Stormwater, or, you know, whether we would need to get Minor Barnett and environmental folks with the county involved. But they could always contact our office, and we'll...
Contact your office, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
I just want to comment, I want to thank the developer. We can use, we can use the 83 additional units of housing, so, thank you.
All right, other questions, Mr. Murphy? Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for the staff report. I would recognize Mayor Protem Adams.
Do we need to close the public hearing? Have we done?
I think we closed the public hearing.
Okay, the conversation took me some, I apologize. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3521.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion or questions? Councilwoman Adams, please go ahead.
Thank you. Just as Councilwoman McIntosh said, it's, in my mind, I don't think any council member up here is against us building housing. We all know, we just signed off to do the task finally. And I know that Mr. King, Mr. Murphy, when we discussed this back in the fall, we talked about it, and it wasn't this development that made us have to talk about it. It was basically Germanton Road and some other things that are going on in the northeast ward, that now we have to make sure, as you were saying, that DOT, Transportation Advisory Committee, streets, council, everybody now, planning, has to look at development and what goes with it. We know that we want to see grocery stores and bus lines and drugstores, the urgent care, check, got that. But we also realize now that streets and sidewalks play a very big role, because people want to have somewhere to live, but it goes back to what we've been saying. Every house now, if it's a residential house, townhouse, apartment, there are at least three to five cars, if not more, in that family or that group of persons living there. So, you know, it's not that we're not going to do anything. Again, we pledged to work with DOT developers, and we may even have to sit down, Mr. Murphy, Mr. King, and come up with some type of process or plan as to, just like we do with traffic patterns and the amount of vehicles on roads, that we actively work with developers to understand the growing impact of environmental transportation to other people already there. Now, does that mean that we are going to make it difficult again for developers? I got one vote, I don't think so. But we are always open, and I am as a council member, to listen to constituents and try to plug in corrective and preventive action and solutions that work for us all, because we all know land is getting scarce and cars are just, they make cars, lots of them, and people buy them. But with that, again, I want to thank the planning department, the Singleton, and the developer and all of us for working together to try to make this a win-win, much like Mayor, some of the other projects that have been brought to us tonight. As we said, we're looking at some more houses. And one more thing, Mr. King, Mr. Murphy, particularly Mr. King, Mr. Murphy, again, we made this, it wasn't a resolution, Mayor, that we were going to do 750 this year?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's a promise. But can I get, can council, every time we add more housing, I know we're not invested in all of it, but can the council see, every time a case comes where people are adding houses, housing of any type, that we see that number where we are right now? If that would be okay?
Kind of like a United Way, Monarch kind of thing? Kind of like a United Way, Monmouth kind of thing.
Mayor Protem, what we could probably do is just publish, like, a quarterly report every time that kind of gives you those, those statistics on a kind of routine basis, if that's acceptable.
Because the housing isn't considered housing until they get the certificate of occupancy anyway, right?
That's correct. There'll be obviously a lead time from what you've seen tonight to when it, when it actually gets built.
Very good. Thank you so much.
You got it. All right. You have a motion second. Please vote for this when this item comes forward. And that is unanimous. Thank you all very much. Item Z nine.
Item Z nine, Mayor joins recommendations for reapportment to the MWBE Advisory Committee. Cassandra Brunson, term expiring February 2025. LeQiu Metz, term expiring February 2024.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All those in favor, please vote yes for this when it comes forward. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item Z 10.
Item Z 10, Mayor joins recommendations for appointment to the MWBE Advisory Committee. Manny C. Caneen, term expiring December 2023. Corey Kate English, term expiring April 2023. Brittany J. Lowry, term expiring February 2023. Weida Patton, term expiring December 2023.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote yes for this item comes up, or no, if you're a yes, it obviously. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item Z 11.
Item Z 11, Mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Citizens Budget Advisory Council. James Zena, A. Woodyard, term expiring December 2022.
Is there a motion?
Second. I mean, so moved, second.
Motion second, council. Thank you. And discussion? Mayor Protem covered both of them for us.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please vote yes on this one. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z 12.
Item Z 12, Mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission. Michael E. Green, term expiring May 2023.
So moved.
Motion second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Please vote, all those in favor, vote yes on this one. That is unanimous. Thank you. And then, item Z 13.
Item Z 13, Mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Urban Food Policy Council. Shalonda O. Burton, term expiring February 2023.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion second. Any discussion? Please, all those in favor, please vote yes for this one. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, councilmembers. Councilmember Recipio has to be recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmembers. I just wanted to put it in the record that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I want to also say, on Wednesday, our 795 educators at our 10 East Ward schools, and they are Glenn High School, Smith Farms, Sedge Gardens, Hall Woodworth, Art Space School, the Career Center, Carter High, Kennedy High, Winston-Salem Prep, and Ephesus Academy, will receive in appreciation for their service to our wonderful students in the East Ward, a boxed lunch and various gift cards and certificates that have been donated by the businesses and organizations in the East Ward. We are deeply appreciative of all of those who donated. And I will not read the list, but there have been quite a few who said, yes, we want to appreciate our East Ward educators. And it, we were able to raise about $15,600 for our teachers. And this is a really big deal because the East Ward schools are some of the schools with the least resources given to them. Some don't even have a PTA. So this is really great. And we wanted to say thank you to our teachers and our educators. And I want to say thank you to all of our donors.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That's wonderful. Councilwoman McIntosh.
I just wanted to bring to councilmembers' attention, because we were talking about, we nominated people for boards and commissions tonight. The Sustainability Committee has five of its seven members rolling off in the month of May. I'll get any, I'll ask Helen Popowski to get a message down, because they're, they're assigned by wards. So if we could give some thought as to who, we would like to step into those positions, that would be good. It hurts to have them open. They can't get their business done.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh. It's, it'll be very helpful. Any other comments by our council? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, or adjourn.